Good evening, everyone. Oh. I can't, is my mic on? I can't really tell. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the McMinnville Budget Committee Work Session. It is 6:00 on Wednesday, September 18, 2024. Because this is a work session, a quorum is not required, nor do we have a roll call of attendees. Tonight, we are discussing the proposal of moving forward on a biennial budget process. They are requesting our feedback on two questions. One, should we pursue a biennial budget for the upcoming budget cycle? And two, should we purchase a web-based budget and financial transparency application? At this time, I'm going to turn the time over to Jennifer Cuellar, the McMinnville's Finance Director, to begin the presentation on this evening's topic.
Thanks, everybody. And I think maybe everyone's here. That's great. Thanks for coming. So I'm going to share my screen. I've got some slides. And depending on the amount of discussion as we go, I'm hoping to wrap up in kind of 15 to 20 minutes and then turn the floor over to you guys for discussion. So, let's see. As Meredith mentioned, we're looking for feedback on a couple of items, whether to move forward with the biennial budgeting process and also looking at the web-based budget application that we've looked at. And Budget Committee members, a member could support both those things, neither of those things, or only one or the other. And, let's see, there's, I'm not going to go into the level of detail, it's in the staff report, but that is available on the website with the meeting information. So, next. So, most of you all were with us on April 23 when we had an initial conversation at this body. And, kind of, when that meeting wrapped up and we polled folks, seven people were pretty interested and favorable with the proposed change to move, oops, I'm touching things with my elbow. That's not good. Three people wanted more information, didn't feel like they had a strong opinion yet, and one person really preferred to stay with the annual process. That was kind of where we sat then. And some additional study and information was requested about public transparency and public engagement, the ability to have strengthened financial oversight. And also, there were, it was interesting to me, there was concern raised about would a new software system have a negative impact on staff having to manage and learn a new So, we looked at those things, and this is just a reminder, these were the, but the objectives that we have for looking at this, we want to reduce the administrative burden generally across the city. We want to utilize that off-year to move forward other projects that have been identified many for a number of years, wanting to just have more staff time to invest beyond the compliance aspect of the budget. We wanted to make sure that the budget transparency component was at least equivalent to what we were doing now. And we also thought that there might be benefits to having a longer time horizon in financial planning just generally. So, just to recap on the prior research we did, we polled 19 jurisdictions in Oregon that do biennial budgets. We got 12 responses, and most saw efficiencies with moving to biennium and felt that the presentation of the biennial budget was as good as the annual budget process. And we had also done an internal survey, asked about pain points of internal staff. We also looked at what can our current software system do? And it is possible, and New World is the name of our accounting software, and New World, you can put in two budget years, but because the accounting operates on a single year, there are some complications and some administrative hurdles to utilizing that effectively. We talked with a couple of jurisdictions who use New World and our biennial budget folks to see how they managed it, and they, you know, they had to add workarounds to their processes. And then, just as you'll see in terms of the budget functionality of the softwares that we demoed, none of the transparency or ability to tag things differently, maybe move to prioritize budgeting kinds of things, none of that new capacity would be unlocked by staying with our current system. So, and then, on the legal compliance, just to remind folks, we looked at the charter, and there is a mention of annual budget in the context of the tax levy in the charter, but because the way that the ORSs guide us in what the Budget Committee would be approving and the council ultimately adopting, the tax levies are articulated on an annual basis, and so, for the two years independently, so that our charter is consistent and fine, doesn't need addressing. But there are a couple of details in code that are associated, it's just, it's the part that governs the airport. It says annual budget, so we'd want to look at that language. And then, a couple of next steps that I hadn't mentioned before is if we get the feedback that we do want to move forward, council would formally make the decision via a resolution to establish a biennial budget period. And that's part of why we're having this work session is, as I think everyone is aware, the council really depends on this group of people to weigh in on these things, and they wouldn't want to make a decision like that without hearing from the entire group, right? And then, secondarily, in terms of the appointed members of the Budget Committee, the terms would move to four-year terms from the three-year term, and there are articulated a number of ways to kind of manage that transition that are allowable, and so we'd need to, you know, work through the logistics of that. So, this is a slide that we showed back in April, and it's just a reminder around the look that we did in terms of time savings and opportunity cost. So, just to be clear, this isn't money that would actually be saved, it's the value of labor that could be directed to other activities. And the approximation of about 1,600 hours across the city, just to give you reference, a full-time employee has about 1,840 working hours in a year, so 1,600 hours is slightly less than a full FTE. And so, this proposal by no stretch should, we don't intend to reduce FTEs if we move forward on this. It just would be we unlock that staff time across the city to be able to put towards other activities. Let's see. So, the staff proposal is we'd love to move forward, we would love to move to a biennial budget process, and we were really impressed with the functionality that the budget application solutions make possible. And so, we were really excited about the ability to leverage this process and end up with transparency and financial oversight capacity that I didn't anticipate we would be able to get out of this kind of a move, but that the software, taking a phased approach again, we wouldn't be able to do all of these things in the first cycle, but we'd be able to bring them on over time. So, and I guess just one last clarification as I go into looking, giving you a peek at the budget solution that we're recommending. This would not replace the city's accounting system. It would work in conjunction with the accounting system, and the primary points of contact are, we would create a link where overnight, all of the actual activity happening in our accounting system would get poured into the budget system, and to the extent that we have created public interface with this information, anyone at will will be able to drill down into as much detail as you'd like of our just ongoing daily financial transactions that are in the system. And then, on the other end of the process, the budget would be built in the new web-based system, and then, we would upload that budget, just a one, year one, into the one year, and then year two later would go in the second year. So, that's, that would mean that the workarounds that other jurisdictions that are doing biennial budgeting in our current software, we just, we wouldn't go there. We would pretend like year one is just our annual budget and stay on track there, and we'd have the two-year budget to actual reporting available in the budget software, the web-based application. And then, that reporting, as would be needs for the state or in our annual reports, would come from there. So, that's kind of the vision here. So, the next slides are just screenshots from the product demo of the solution that the staff group that came together to look at this recommends to move forward. Some of this information is hard to read, mainly I just, I grabbed screenshots of the recording so that I could just highlight what some of the functionality is that we were like, whoa, that's pretty cool, and just, I want to share some of the neat things that are available. Let's see. So, this one just talks about how this system, they hang their hat on efficiencies that they bring to organizations. So, my sense is the main way that we would be saving money across, or saving time across the organization is the biennial change, but there will be additional efficiencies accrued with the product itself for the budget process, although I honestly suspect those efficiencies would accrue much more strongly to finance itself and information services, actually. So, here's their little nice graphic of their holistic solution, and our intent is to purchase the operating and personnel. They also have a capital component that we looked at, but we're not quite ready to do capital improvement planning yet, but it is definitely on our horizon and we want to get there. So, it's nice to know that an integrated component could slide in when we're ready, a year, two, or three down the road. Let's see. The other thing that's really great about this is the budget refresh capacity. So, we produce, as you all are very aware, this really nice proposed budget book that you all spend, you know, hours of your life with, it's on your bedside table, but when we get to the adopted version, the actual version, you know, there are always some changes that we make, right? Well, we don't have the capacity to refresh all of that data and recreate that budget book, so all we have right now for the adopted budget is just the line item detail. We don't redo our budget book. But this system will allow us to refresh that data, and we'll be able to publish a secondary approved budget document for people to refer to. So, that's, I think, a really nice upside to the system that we're considering. Let's see. Then, just, the interface is similar, there are some more, the things that are more user-friendly about it are that there are more opportunities to look at comparative data within the system instead of having to close one thing and look at another in our current system. And there are also, because it allows us to have within the system, like all components of the budget, we have many spreadsheets outside of New World that we have to manage and refresh as we move through the budget process that folks on staff can't see because it's on my computer or Crystal's computer. So, this will, this package will allow all of it, all of the allocations and kind of the nitty-gritty stuff to be in the system, and people can check that out if they need to or want to. So, this slide that you can't see unfortunately, oh wow, that's super light. So, there are columns in here where people can identify one-time costs, which will transform our ability to be able to track over time what our true operating core services budget is, to exclude the one-time costs and grants from that, and that will just pay incredible dividends on our ability not only trending backwards, but forecasting. So, that's, that was an eye-opener. It also includes the ability to add as many kind of columns or data modifiers as we want from a priority budgeting perspective, which also wasn't a part of our initial objectives. But imagine if we could tag all of our expenses and revenues according to the strategic plan objectives, our core services, any number of ways, and then, that information, if we've tagged it, the public can view it, can ask to view the budget data on that pivot. So, it opens up possibilities that we weren't even considering at the beginning of the So, this is just the integrated allocation thing, which will literally save IS, like, days of time. Then, here's the last two slides on the budget functionality, so I'm wrapping up here, is these are the public-facing kind of transparency things. So, similar to iHeartMac, it's able to create spotlights, you know, at the top of a website, they'll have rotating images, and you can hit the image and then drill down into it, those kinds of web-based communications tools that can be tied to the budget data. You also can, any dataset, we can drop into the performance section of the application, and we can start looking at adding in performance information if we so choose. Our audit, for example, has 10 years of runtime of a number of programmatic metrics across the city. We could load that kind of thing in, and we'd already have some decent trending data on a number of programmatic performance metrics. So, that's a possibility that is new. And they also have functionality to create dashboards. So, these, I guess, are similar to those spotlight things, and you can have dashboards that are available for the public, or you can have them internal if you've passwords, and so maybe there's one for the council, maybe there's a dashboard for ET members. I mean, we can get really creative, and I think these are the kinds of things after the public-facing ones would be on the kind of over-time implementation, but there's, there are a lot of possibilities here. And then, just, I think it's also worthy of noting that the budget book output, it's designed to be ADA compliant, the digital webbook, which we don't do right now. So, that's another thing that I think it's time for us to do these things, and this software gives you the workflows to be able to achieve it in a way that would be, I think, a much less of a lift than if we were just trying to figure out how to do it with each Excel spreadsheet and PDF page and that kind of thing. So, that's pretty interesting.
So, Samuel L. Jackson can read me the budget?
Oh, ew. I wonder, I wonder what his rates are? Just, that's, yeah, that may be out of reach, but just, I mean, on the things that, this is the city of Abilene, Texas, they use this system. And so, you can see, for example, there's a check register. So, just, if somebody wanted to see what were all the checks you issued last week, there would, you know, there's a setup just to, you know, an existing template where we could pour our checking information in there, and that's a tile that people could drill down on, which is, you know, slightly different from hitting the budget and budget-to-actual kind of views. So, they're just, there are many out-of-the-box templates set up to help guide you to achieving the kinds of outcomes you want with sharing information with the public and your governing body, et cetera. So, at this point, just the, at the ET, I'm happy to be able to report that everyone's supportive of making this move, but for, on both sides, both the biennial budget, but also opening up the functionality that this application would be able to provide us. And so, I had, I don't know if Scott's on the line because he's got his school board meetings going on at the same time, but he put together thoughts of, for IS in particular, the wins that they would see. So, is Scott on? I don't think, yeah. So, just, there are custom reports right now that our current system depends on, and that's literally days of his team's time around budget time to do. It also mitigates the risk of these custom reports because if you miss something, so one of the things, Crystal spent probably, I don't know, three, four, five days' worth of time is making sure every single data point was coming through the report. So, all of that happens by hand, and it also, the allocations, every time a number moves in the budget that's related to shared IS spend, or his staffing level, or the cost of health insurance, it cascades through to every single number that he handkeys into the budget across the organization. So, that's a really painful thing that just would happily go away. So, and he also, from a workload perspective, they've got the time to support this this fall, which is when we'd need to be digging in, you know, virtually immediately, if you all are interested in moving forward after this meeting to get it going. And then, I also have my friend Jeff from Public Works, who was part of the team looking at the software.
Yeah, myself and the city engineer were able to be part of the review process for the software, and we're both really excited about the capabilities of what it can do and the future capabilities with the capital budgeting opportunities, and how we could share and be more transparent with the community on some of the very large projects we have coming up. Also, just wanted to say that we very much support Finance's proposal here. Many of our Public Works projects, especially the large capital, we're already having to budget for multiple years anyway, when you add in the design time and the construction time and everything else. So, budgeting for two years at a time is really nothing new for us. One of the exciting things, which I've talked about with this committee before, is this idea of CIP prioritization, and in the research I've done in creating those processes in the past, the communities have a lot of success with that, are on biennial budgets, and it allows them in their off-years to do that CIP prioritization. So, when Jennifer's talking about that additional staff time not being spent necessarily on budgeting every year, that gives us time to do more outreach with the community, more analysis of data to make sure we're building the right projects at the right time in the right places. So, we're very excited about this, and just wanted to be here to give our support for
So, in the packet, there's a draft implementation timeline, and so, this just goes over kind of, at the council and budget committee level, what's kind of going on over a two-year period with the ET, the various departments and their relationship with budgeting, and then finance and information services. So, I won't go into any details on that, it's, you know, it's all in the packet, but so it seems like a doable project that would positively impact our workload. And, oh, one thing I did fail to mention that's in the report is the, in the current FY 24-25 budget, we did budget to do this, to buy the application. So, costs for the applications came in higher than, I had looked at these products two, three years ago, and the pricing has gone up, but we're like between $4,500 and $7,500 next year short of what was explicitly budgeted. So, we'll be able to make that up in other ways in the finance department. It's important enough to us to, you know, make those shifts. And then, longer term, we've got another $70,000 for year two and three to help support the carrying costs, but kind of, worst-case scenario is we're looking at over a five-year, not five-year, a four-year contract term, I think we're short about $50,000, which would be additional cost across the organization. It's not completely, even though it's a finance activity, all funds participate and pay for budgeting, right? So, it doesn't all accrue to the general fund, but we don't have full funding for, to cover the carrying costs, but it's not a complete financial lift that we've got to find the money for, at least immediately. So, that's the end of my remarks. Jeff, I don't know, do you have any thoughts or anything you'd like to share? Okay. So, back to you, Meredith. Thanks.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about the presentation?
Thank you. There's a lot that I really like in here, including some of the things regarding transparency, having a more user-friendly budget. We get that feedback a lot, that we have a budget that's not really approachable for mass consumption, so I like the transparency and the accessibility to it, including the ADA accessibility. I would love to understand more the questions around the charter and specifically the airport commission in the long run, but my main question right now is if you could address kind of the security and the cybersecurity risks, have there been breaches? Have there been breaches with this company with similar software? What kind of data would be accessible? And things of that nature, thanks.
Well, I'm not Scott, but Scott was in the meetings. And they spent, they spent, I don't know, five or 10 minutes going through all of the security and data concerns that you're talking about. I'm not, I don't have the expertise to be able to say yay or nay in terms of that. But I know that Scott left those, the demonstration feeling comfortable from that perspective. But we can get you more, a more direct opinion from him.
Jerry Hart?
Thank you. So we, you know, we always end the budget hearings with a motion which approves the budget and then also establishes the tax rate. So what, what would the motion say?
It would, it would be the same, the same thing about the, the amount budgeted, but it would be the total two-year amount. And then there would be two tax levies. What the levy is for year one of the biennial period and what the levy is year two of the biennial period. So those would be distinct in the motion. And actually, this question reminds me, just kind of heads up, in November, Feb-, November, December timeframe, we're going to invite you all back so that we can talk about what tax levy, property tax levy rates you want staff to budget to, whether it's a, a one-year run or a two-year run, depending on what comes out of these meetings.
So would, there would be a need for the council to approve the budget each year? I mean, it seems to me that there would almost have to be, wouldn't there?
No, it would, it's, it's a biennial motion. So the, the assessor would use that to guide it for both years. And then, just like now, as there are supplemental budgets, there, that would be part of council's work to do. And I think we would bring together this group when we're kind of done with year one so that you, we can talk about, how did we do, where did, where were there misses? Or, you know, new things came up? And so what are the year one supplementals? And then anything that would need to change for year two? It's just not a required meeting from a statutory perspective to do that as a group. It's, it would fall in council. And another thing to mention, because it may be in our future, is bond authority and how that interplays. And there's, I, I printed it out in case any questions came up. The, the state's budget manual describes how to manage through those things. So that's contemplated, that ballot measures can happen mid-year. Bonds can be, can happen that were not budgeted. There are processes for integrating those things.
So another concern that I have is, you know, there's kind of two levels of volatility. There's the revenue volatility that can happen over a year, let alone over a two-year period. And there's also the, the need vol- volatility. Because sometimes, you know, you'll look and say, wow, we, you know, as a city, we need to allocate greater resources. So, you know, I, I think I would have to have some assurance that, that the volatility in both revenue and in expenditures could be accommodated through, you know, the biennial process. So could you just kind of, you know, walk us through how that would happen?
Yeah, I mean, part of, I mean, this is maybe independent of the biennial discussion. But one of the things that the budget application, as I mentioned, does is it, it will allow us to take out those one-time costs. So we'll actually be able to project better, I believe, in terms of what is our actual steady state. Because that's been a question since I've been here. What really is our steady state? What does it take to do our work, our core services? And it's a, it's hard to get there because there's always grants and one-time things happening in, in there. But most revenues are pretty durable and trend lines. We, there's, there's some volatility in, gosh, some fee revenue? Planning, planning fee revenue maybe is volatile. But your property taxes are pretty known. Your franchise fees are pretty known. Most of, most of the revenues are steady state. Your core services, your, your, your workforce is, is fairly known. I mean, short of taking an entire department out of your city and sending it to its own independent taxing district, which, you know, could happen. Though, those kinds of things, I think, are known. And you would stair-step them. I, the places where the unknowns are, are grants. And so those can spike up and down. And we typically, if we're not sure of something, we don't budget it. And doing a supplemental budget process is the, the, the administrative lift of adding those things in as they come up is pretty minimal. So it would, we would be doing those things in the same way, whether it was an annual budget process or a two-year budget run.
Okay, so, thank you. My final thought is, you know, I like the idea of, I think the software would, would provide a lot of transparency to the public. But also, you know, one of the problems that I see is with the biennial process is basically cutting in half the opportunity for public input into the budget process, which is, you know, it's kind of why we have a budget committee and, and the annual process. And we have open meetings and people can come and make comments. So I think if the city is going to move forward with this, I think it'd be really important to come up with a backup plan or a way of providing some additional public input other than just the every other year budget committee hearings. I think that would be both wise in terms of, of a political matter and also in terms of just, you know, helping the public understand. It could be as simple as having, you know, the budget committee come together every, you know, the off, in the off year during the spring, and full information to the, to the budget committee and also to the public at that time. It would be a meeting where the public could come and give input. I think that if you, that if that doesn't happen, I think there'd be very valid criticism of, of really curtailing the public input into the budget process.
Sure. And we didn't really focus on it a lot in this presentation or in the staff report. But that was actually one of the things that we talked about in the earlier work session, is that, that second year where you free up the budget preparation time could be used for other activities, including more community engra-, more community engagement, a more robust exercise than simply calling together the budget committee and hoping that folks show up. We could do surveys, we could do outreach, we could do some of the things that we don't have the capacity to do while we're building the budget.
Council President Garvin on Zoom?
Thank you. Couple different questions, but the first one would be, what was kind of the methodology used to come up with the 1,600 hours of, of staff time savings throughout the budget process over the biennial?
Yeah, I, I added up all of the meetings that we do internally and this body, and then looked at also just by, by position, by all the finance positions, by the IS positions, and by department head, and then by staffers who also contribute. So that's, I mean, I can send you the spreadsheet if you really want to get into it. But that's, that was the methodology I used. It was, it was pretty detailed to get to, how much time do we spend? And then if we take away the statutory component of it, people will still need to be, you know, reforecasting, letting us know how they're doing, have their plans changed, so there was time still in year two. It's just, they, they wouldn't need to, I don't know, redo all of the narratives necessarily. Or just, there are a lot of components that go into it. We wouldn't have to spend an ET meeting and people's time on the capital forecast again, you know, in the off year, for example, that kind of thing. So if, if you'd like, I can send you that spreadsheet.
No, that all sounds like you got pretty detailed with it. I was more interested in if any time had been considered that it'd take longer to build a biennial budget than a single-year budget just because staff hasn't done it. And I would imagine with it being a bigger budget, it's going to take more time each year for staff to do when they do it every two years. And so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like straight up time for time and it was, you know, 75% or 70% of what the impactful time savings was.
Yeah, no, you're right. And when I, when I presented it last time, I explained that in the first year, our time actually went up. And you can see it in the graphics. So it's just, once we kind of get in there, it's, that's the 16 hour, 1,600 hours estimate over the two-year cycle is what I think. But yeah, you're absolutely right, year one, it'll take more time.
Sounds good, thank you for that. I guess for me, it's a yes on the software and a no on the biennial budget out of the gate. I think staff and the city and the citizens need time to learn the software and how to navigate it and make sure that we're not creating a multiplier by onboarding a new budget process with the new software at the same time. Down the road, I could see potentially going to biennial budget, but with the potential for a new park and rec facility and the core service cost for that. And I think it's important that the council and budget committee have an, an active annual review of the budget and make sure that we're not having any runaway costs and having any deficits like we did two budget cycles ago and we needed to implement a city service fee to cover the difference.
Any other thoughts? Oh, no, I, I wondered if Council President Garvin had any other thoughts. Sounds like, okay, Counselor Chenoweth?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and thank you already for the thoughtful questions that I've heard. I, and it probably was said, and it was probably in the presentation, I went back through the presentation on my computer and labored in vain to find it. So, how much does this new software cost us?
In the, in the staff report, it describes it, but I, I did it verbally. I just, I was working all weekend on this and didn't take the time to make the graph pretty. So it's, uh, let's see, the, here it is. The, the one-time costs are like $42,000. And then the annual year one cost is a little more than $39,000. So when you go, the proposal would be in the biennial context to do a four-year contract instead of a three plus other years. The total is just under $207,000. And we've got $140,000 in repurposed ARPA dollars to contribute to this. And we, there are a couple of modules we'd be able to get rid of in our current software. So that, that reduces the net burden. And there are other standalone applications we've purchased. For example, a financial projection software that we would probably be able to let go. There are, there are some other things that may drive down the, the total new cash needed to, to pay for that. Is that, go, go to your question?
Well, not really. If I heard you correctly, I'm hearing you say $39,000 a year is what we're going to have for carrying costs?
Right, with a three, they proposed in their, in their bid, a 3% annual increase.
Okay. So I, I would concur wholeheartedly with what Council President Adam just said. I, I have deep concerns about moving to a biennial, biennial budget, given a lot of the volatility and discussions that have been occurring in our community regarding taxes and fees for the last four years. I think this is probably not the time to be doing this, particularly when we're talking about a potential bond measure for park and rec and a new pool, and we don't know what those carrying costs are going to look like. I, I just feel like, for me at this point, we need that yearly touchback for the, the budget committee and for the community to go over the budget. I'm also concerned, I would veer a little bit with Counselor Garvin, on continually taking on more costs when I, when the general theme of the city is we don't have enough money. And so it, it seems like every, every discussion we've had adds more ongoing burden to our cost. And, and I just feel like at this time, I'm, I'm a little reticent to do it. I'm not wholly opposed to it, but I'm reticent to do that with, with, with this software. Thank you.
Counselor Menke?
So you said that the initial purchase would be for personnel and operating, module part of it would be, come later. But Jeff was speaking to the advantages of using the capital portion of it, I am assuming. So my question is, how long would it take us, assuming we do this, to get the capital portion? I mean, what are we looking at that, four years out, six years out? But, but, because, I mean, we do have some rather large capital projects.
It could be even just a year out. It's just additional cost to it. We're going to have to be doing that projecting anyway. And so we're kind of going to, the idea was we would get to learn the new software with the rest of the city and be kind of just doing that. And then we can, if it look, if it worked well, we can look at putting in money in the budget to add it in for capital costs just a year later.
I personally am in favor of doing this. I think it, you know, provides greater transparency. I think it's going to save you folks some time. And it will open up some real opportunities for us as far as financial information for everyone. So I think it's a good idea. I, I realize there are additional costs, but I suspect that there's some trade-offs in the cost with what we're currently doing. So that's where I'm at.
Budget Committee member Harmon Ferry?
Thank you. Do you know, does the state budget on an annual basis or a biennial basis?
Biennial.
And then my other question is, of the folks, I think you said three of the 10 closest cities are on a biennial now. Do you know if any that you talked to were on biennial and decided to change and go back to annual?
No, no.
Everyone who you talked to who made the switch is happy with the change?
Correct. And also just Toowallaton, which is our closest population neighbor, uses this software and is biennial, so.
That was my question. How many people who you spoke to who use UNA have a biennial budget process?
Well, we only, we ask them only to give us references of people who use it bi-, on a biennial basis.
So all the people you communicated with use it for biennial?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Any other?
Um, forgive me if it's on one of the slides, but if we were to not go with the biennial, but we went with the new software, was there an amount of time saved just with the new software alone?
Yeah, I, I didn't run that analysis, but I, there will be time, there would be time savings, and it would predominantly accrue to information services and to finance. It would be less meaningful organization-wide. So I don't think most of the other departments, I believe their experience, it would be a more user-friendly interface, but they still would have to do all of the, you know, they'd have to write their narratives, they'd have to put the, the data together. So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't get an, the off-year kind of time savings benefit.
Right, but I, I would also assume that throughout the year, having easier access to budget and/or where we're currently at in, in those departments would essentially alleviate time somewhere of asking questions and...
I, possibly?
So I, I think there would be some marginal time savings, and I say marginal because a lot of the time we spend is the meeting time every year. And so we, we do the core services meeting every year. We do the capital funds every year. We do the operating funds every year. We have two to three budget committee meetings every year. We publish the document every year. We have public hearings for the city council and the urban renewal agency every year. And, and that's a lot of the staff driver. And, and so a lot of that savings you see in the off-year is not having to do those, those physical meetings, the, the publication, the hearings. And, and that wouldn't go away in a biannual, in an annual process.
Yep.
I have a question. So do you feel like there's value in transitioning to the new software at the same time as transitioning in our budget process? Do you think, like, is there savings in doing it at once? Or you mentioned phasing in the application, so could it also be important after we phased it in to then phase in the biennial budget process?
I think to do the biennial budget without the software would be really difficult. I'm not sure I would recommend doing that. But the, the reverse, if we had the software and then moving to biennial later, I think would be fine. It's just, we, we looked at the software because we knew we would need help transitioning, and this will allow us to make that jump much more effectively and easier. And it's, it's just these, we thought there would be some upside in terms of, you know, it would be web-based, so yay, more transparency. But just the, the amount of power was, it exceeded my expectations of what these things could deliver. So it's that component that I think would be phased, if that helps.
Yes.
So, to me, the, moving to the biennial budget seems to make a lot of sense because, especially of the time savings for staff, and that two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars worth of time a year that could be put towards other things like strategic planning, which in theory would probably be increasing efficiency and reducing costs elsewhere to try to offset the, because it is a pretty big price tag, it seems like, compared to what we're paying now to move to this software. And there are some very compelling benefits, like the public transparency that we've talked about, the reduced staff time. I, honestly, I can't believe you're doing so much of it in individual Excel sheets that I feel very bad for you that you're doing that, when I read that and I didn't realize that. And I can't imagine how hard that is to keep track of. And also the possibility for errors with that, if you're in hand entering all of that. That said, that's still a lot of money to put towards those incremental, or there might be more efficient, cheaper ways that we can promote the public transparency part or reduce staff time than this particular software. So I don't, I don't see a reason to move to this software without moving to the biennial budgeting process at the same time. Just, or at least I think there's probably value in looking into what other options we have to meet public transparency goals and the reducing staff time goals versus just this really nice software. That's, am I understanding that correctly? That it's, it, because to me, it seemed like the, it, it really only made sense to go with the software upgrade if we were moving to the biennial budgeting, since the software we have now really wouldn't work with a biennial budget.
It, it would make the, it would make the annual accounting harder, so more hand processes just in terms of the workaday world. So that would, that would add friction across the organization in terms of just getting things done with purchase orders and that sort of thing. So, you know, the, the concept was to do it in tandem, but, but just having heard discussions, like, well, I mean, maybe you could approach it differently, but it, we'd have to, if you all didn't want to make the investment in the software that we've budgeted, then I think we'd want to check ourselves whether it, from a staff perspective, it would make sense to do the biennial. Although I, I can share with you at least personally, the, I, the concerns you all raised in terms of staff, animo, having to stay doing this annually really would be a bummer for the finance department. It would, it would lower our job satisfaction, so does, because we just can see how much time we're, we're chewing through that, and we can't get to other things.
No, that's the most compelling part of it to me, is that freed up staff time to do other things. So I, for that reason, I think I would be, I would be in favor of doing both at the same time. I don't think I'd be in favor of just doing the new software without going to biennial. I think if we, I think it would be a different discussion if we wanted to look at other, maybe more software options of how we can include, increase transparency and reduce staff having to use Excel spreadsheets. Like, because those are kind of not intended benefits necessarily of looking into the software. I mean, when we had the meeting in April, we talked about it being a concern that there might not be as much public transparency. And it turns out with this, with this option, it was a huge improvement. So that's great, but there might be other things out there that could also improve public transparency without costing us forty thousand dollars extra every year, at least.
Can I ask for a clarification? Were you saying if we use the new app and stay with annual budgeting, there will be friction? Is that what, when you said friction, you referring to using the app with annual budgeting?
No, that was if we didn't have the app. If we didn't have the new software but did go with the biennial internal to our system, it just doesn't, it can produce the reports, which is great for the biennial budget part, but it has these negative downstream consequences on your actual accounting operations. That's where the friction is.
Budget Committee member Watney?
Thank you. A couple of quicks points. Page four, third paragraph, specifically regarding the choose to invest the time to incorporate the performance metrics and our tracks, our spending by the strategic plan. I just, I thought I heard you say this that was in, was included in this. Are we trying to do that, too?
No, it is. I just, I wanted to, in this paragraph, I wanted to acknowledge the fact that if we do start adding performance kinds of qualitative data into the budget process, that actually may add some new things citywide that we want to track.
New data points to analyze.
Exactly. So it could, by, by utilizing this capacity, we've got to input the data and look at the data. And that's something we haven't, we, well, we've attempted to price out, for example, core services. If we had had this, this would have been a much, that would have been a much easier way to kind of value core services and evaluate how much it would cost to move from base to above base or optimal, that kind of thing. But...
Okay. To go along with that, does the performance portion of that take into consideration hours worked versus dollars spent?
You, yes, it has the flexibility to put in anything you would like that can go on a data table.
Yeah. I just want to make the point that that's probably one of the largest metrics in labor that has been overlooked over the years until we went through the last pandemic where rates started going crazy. You can't do a good, solid analysis unless you look at hours worked versus dollars worked, because dollars don't make any sense anymore when you look at efficiencies. I also looked into a lot of programs like this over the last couple of years. I'm so much in support of this. The cost-benefit ratio, I do believe you have no idea how much you will free up in other departments, how turnover will go down, where job satisfaction, I think, will go up. And it's one of the major things that I hammer on all the time is employee terminal turnover and, and job satisfaction. On the CIP portion, just a quick question. I know you, I love it. I love doing that, too, believe me. I think it's the greatest thing in the world. One, one quick point, do they allow, does this system allow you to backload all your equipment and backload annual hours worked for each piece of equipment? It becomes pretty important when you're forecasting when a piece of equipment will wear out.
Yeah. We do that tracking more with our CMMS software, so our Hanson software. I'm not sure if Hanson talks to UNA directly. That's something we can look into.
But you are tracking that, so that makes sense.
Yes, we're putting more time and investment into using that more robustly. But yes, we, we're starting to do that more the last few years.
Perfect. And this is a sidebar to that. If they do decide to go into the CIP, one of the things that we found out when we put a program into place at a hotel in California like this, your IT data storage gets gobbled up like crazy with all the JPEGs. So when you do do this, you make sure he has a couple of free terabytes. I am fully in favor of this, if you haven't figured it out yet. All of the above.
So both, question one and two?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Counselor Menke?
Just to be clear, I'm in favor of both one and two also. I'm going to bring up something, and it's rather selfish, I realize, but for twenty years, every year we have sat here and done the budget, it takes a huge amount of time, volunteer time, from basically January through to the end of June. I mean, there's a lot of time sitting in meetings, having discussions. And not that it isn't good, but I see an opportunity here to reduce volunteer time, because there's a certain amount of volunteer fatigue with all the goodies that we have been doing in the last few years. And things that could be information that we could get more handily through this software and some forward thinking for two years, I think is a really good idea. I, I just want to bring that up because I, I think staff benefits are huge. I'm all in for it. But I want to point out that there is a certain benefit to volunteers, too, and I think you should think about that, particularly if you're going to be around twenty years.
I'm going to ask a couple of questions, going to show my ignorance. At what level do we appropriate, by department or by fund?
It's a mixture. In the general fund, it's by department, and statute calls out some categories that are, cannot be departmental. So it's, the program is personnel costs, materials and services costs, and capital. Those three sum to your department in the general fund. That's your appropriation level. For every other fund, you're appropriating that program for the fund.
Unsubdivided?
Correct.
Okay. A second question is, what, what is the overhead, the administrative overhead, of modifying or amending the budget?
It's, it's a milder process, and the thing that makes it easier is that you can flex it. And by that, I mean from a, from a time standpoint. The budget process, you have to hit dates. You can't not hit them. And so if something else is happening that you really need to attend to, you can't. But with supplementals, there's the flexibility. And so if you've got a free time, like, I already know of four grants that weren't budgeted. And so I'm like, talking with the departments, if there's a, if there's a meaningful reason why you would like to bring a supplemental budget now because you want to talk about it generally to the council, we can do it now. Or we can just hold them all and wait until mid-year and do them then. So you've got, you're, you're able to slot it in when you're, when time permits, given everything else.
Over two years, that wouldn't be an enhanced workload if you had to make adjustments or tweaks as you were going along?
No. And I, I believe in budgeting as accurately as you can, which means that when there are unexpected things, there's supplementals. And I'd much rather do a supplemental than over-budget everything by kind of five or 10% to, because you know there's going to be something new. You just don't know what it is.
I concur, and I also concur in the recommendations of those who've favored both issues.
Yes, Counselor Gary?
Thank you. I didn't fully understand the ARPA savings transition. Can you spend a few more minutes on that for me?
Sure, yeah. So when this group vetted the various projects that we could spend the American Rescue Plan Act dollars on, our seven-point-seven, approximately million dollars, one of them was, we were going to hire a grant manager to manage all of the compliance for it. And so we did. But the grant manager hired just, she left because her family moved to North Carolina, just about a year into the three-year run. And so we didn't, we didn't rehire at that point. And so this is repurposing those dollars that were earmarked for that salary, to repurpose them for other kind of financial-oriented things that are beneficial for the city.
Okay. I would share the concern or curiosity about how, and how we'll replace the annual budget hearing on a biennial meeting or on the budget off-year with, with engagement from the public. I, I think I'd like to know more about that structure, what some options are, what we could pick and do, and feel more comfortable, how we're going to do that, engage with the citizenry in the off-year. I, I like the functionality of the website. I think that, that's always going to be there and, and interactable. But I think, as Mini-Member Hart articulated, that off-year engagement is important. So I'd like to have a little bit better of a handle on that. And then in terms of, I don't, I don't have much concern... bit better of a handle on that. And then in terms of, I don't have much concern or any concern really on the implications of switching to a biennial budget with an incoming bond, unless I'm missing something. But I know we'll have a hearty work session on the operating costs of that. And so prior to the next budget cycle, whether it be an annual or biannual, but for prior to putting that on the ballot, we'll have a good, as a group, idea on what that operating cost will be, or start moving towards that direction. And so I don't share any concern with some that have been aired about the bond or that facility's impact on that budget and switching to a biennial budget. So I would be in favor of moving forward with both of the options on here as presented.
Any other questions?
This is Counselor Peralta. May I chime in? Can folks hear me okay?
You're speaking into your mic great.
Okay, thank you. So the first comment that I have is that I understand that you were looking for comparators that were similar to McMinnville in terms of population and others that have implemented that. So I can appreciate that was the perspective you were bringing. I just want to just make a general comment that when we're looking at comparators for cities, the median household income in Tuolat is $105,000. The median household income in MAC is $65,000. So in terms of the ability of folks here to pay for things compared to Tuolat, and generally speaking, I don't think it's a great comparator. Their city budget's about 10% higher than ours. As far as the two-year budgeting, my only experience with two-year budgeting relates to the state budget. And I just observed that in the last several years, they have amended that process to include an annual process in order to make adjustments that they saw as needed. So I'm a little skeptical about the time savings being as significant as staff currently thinks that it will be. Sometimes I think those beliefs about things can be pinned more to hopes than a reality. So there's that. And then in terms of improved performance from the software, and that's generally something I'm a pretty hard sell on. However, COG did a transition of our finance software, and it did significantly improve the performance of our finance staff. It does seem to me that that's a pretty expensive carrying cost for the software. So I think I still need to hear a little bit more about the overall plan. I can hear the enthusiasm for it among the staff. And there's definitely people on this board that have more experience with this type of process than I do. So I'm appreciative of their thoughtful comments and not totally closed to the idea, but probably a little bit more neutral overall. I probably lean more towards what Counselor Garvin had suggested, but a little skeptical about the, the carrying cost of the software. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counselor Payne isn't here tonight because she is ill, but she did ask me to read something for the record. She stated, "A biennial budget cycle will create increased uncertainty, especially when financial reporting has been limited. Adverse impacts to public understanding the budget and being able to reconcile it, lack of an accurate forecasting resulting in more supplemental spending and budget amendments, which would negate and potential and potential staff time savings. Therefore, I am not in favor of the biennial budget cycle."
All right. So I wanted to make sure everyone got kind of a final chance to speak. If you didn't feel like you got a chance to say your recommendation, I know some people have said. So I'm going to start with the people, I tried to take notes, I'm going to start with the people that I don't, didn't have a clear conclusion. Oh, sorry. Mayor Drapkin has a question.
The, the intersection of a Hanson software came up. I'm generally very much in favor of moving us towards centralized systems that work across departments. But knowing that currently we have many, many, many different systems to operate the city, did we evaluate how many of our existing systems could, I mean, I'm thinking, no, because we said we didn't know if the Hanson would interplay, but I think that's a piece of information I would be really interested in, is where is this going to fold naturally in? Where are we going to spend a lot of time trying to make the systems work or creating another step in order to transfer data and information back and forth? I mean, there was a question at the beginning, but then I kind of said, I don't think there's an answer to it. I think the question is, do we know how many, I don't know how many different software systems we use. Do we know how many different software systems would be able to interact with this to really help move us towards having something that is centralized when, when we're not making a sweeping change to centralize all IS systems within?
Well, I guess my understanding of the way this platform works is because it has the performance section, which can be, any data table can reside there and be used to populate graphs and information on dashboards or public-facing communication tiles. I mean, similar to iHeartMAC, things that that application can't reach back, as far as I'm aware, to any of our financial systems or anything else. So iHeartMAC can't collate that together. But this system would be able to. So to the extent that we, some of the, I guess I'm reminded of some of the discussions at the council goal-setting meeting, was it December last winter? And we talked about the importance of data and where are we on a data continuum? I think this platform would allow us to build more cross-organizational data housing and, you know, analysis. But that, that's just well beyond the scope of kind of what we were looking at here. So we haven't explored it in depth. But I think it's a platform that makes moving the needle in that way, I think, more possible.
Excuse me. Just in addition to that, Jennifer did identify some areas where we wouldn't necessarily be looking to integrate existing software or software modules. We would actually let those go. So we would stop using some of those disparate systems because this software would do that work. And so we wouldn't have to rely on some of the software or some of the modules that we already have.
Counselor Geary, did you have a question?
Oh, I was just curious to, whether we know now or could find out later. But as we upload that data, do we own that data? Or would it be something that would be irrevocably gone, like just the way tech companies go, if it goes out of, out of business, or we want to sever the relationship or whatever? But if we start putting all those eggs in that basket, can we ever get those back?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not a tech guy, but I mean, yeah, the data is ours. We would upload it. I mean, the company has been around for 26 years in this space, which the other companies that we looked at that are, you know, big with the Government Finance Officers Association at a national level, we hit all of the companies that do this, purpose-built municipal budgeting applications. It's, UNA's been doing this the longest of all of the ones that we've, that we consider.
A couple of follow-ups. Scott Burke was on the committee that helped review this, and he is in favor?
Yes, he, he reviewed the paper proposals and saw the demos.
Correct. And then my second question is, we believe the ongoing annual cost to be around $40,000. I know I'm asking you to predict something here, but is there a chance that some of that cost will be recouped, both by offloading some of the programs we may no longer need, and maybe as well some, finding some efficiencies that we're not able to see right now?
Yes. So it will definitely be offset by a couple of modules in our current software. And I, I believe, as Jeff mentioned, when we're done with contracts and other standalone things, we'll be able to let them go. Will it be $40,000 for dollar? I, I don't think so. But, but yes, that is.
A good chunk of that, you believe.
Any other follow-up questions? All right. So we're going to go through, so Committee Member Ernst, did you feel like you got to, got a final say? You were saying, sorry?
Yes, I think I did. I, and I'm still in favor of both.
Committee Member Harmon Ferry?
I'm in favor of both.
Committee Member Cunningham?
Ultimately, I feel like I would be in favor of both, but I do share the concerns of folks that, with everything that we've had going on within the public discourse, switching over to a biennium at this point might cause a little bit more of that. So, but then I think the software and its applications will help alleviate a lot of that as well. So, yes?
Yeah, I would stand at overall support in moving forward, both of them. I've heard either from myself or from others with some questions and information that I'd like to hear the answers to or brought back to get over the yes. But as of now, I'm in favor of moving forward with both of those.
Committee Member Hart?
I think I would be in favor of it if I would be assured that there would be a robust public input during the off-years. And it would also be nice to know what kind of a projected net would be, net increase in cost would be. I think that would be helpful to the, I say it's going to be the council ultimately making this decision. So it'd be, I think that would be, you know, help inform the council on this, on this decision.
Mayor Drapkin?
I am similar to many people at this table, that I, I think that there's a lot to be gained here, especially again in the areas of transparency and accessibility to the budget, which is a, something that we, we hear there's more desire for. I definitely hear the savings in staff time and the impact on morale. We are the 18th largest city in Oregon. We should not be manually inputting information into Excel spreadsheets to track our budget or to create our budget or to forecast a budget. So I think that the modernization is needed. And it does look as though, and everything you've presented says that in the long run, really, there will be savings in, in many ways, both, both hard and soft costs. I share the concern that not having a public process in the interim year is going to create strife. And I, and I, I think that I, if I didn't have a, you know, the ability to still have a voice in that, I would be very upset that I couldn't come and testify on what was happening other than every other year. And so I do, I think that that is a hurdle for me right now, and not one that I can't get past. But similarly to Committee Member Hart, I want to, I want to hear in advance how we're going to address that and interlay a system that we have confidence will allow for continued public input. The other thing that I really, I would love to know in advance is how many of those other systems are we going to shed? And what are the costs of those systems? I don't see the cost of this as the largest hurdle. I completely appreciate and agree with what Counselor Peralta said about what we can afford versus communities that are wealthier than we are. And the first thing I thought of was our comparative population size when he was making those comments. And so, you know, as we look at that kind of like building community wealth, how can we do that? And we can do that by investing in our, in our, in our community and efficiencies as well, even if it's little by little. And, and their population is 27,000 to our 35,000. So with that, I am absolutely supportive of the software. I am a soft yes on the biennium for all those reasons that I think it's very positive with the reservation only of how we'll address that interim year and wanting to be able to communicate that clearly to the public.
As far as my thoughts, I, I feel like a lot of my worries about the biennial budget from our last meeting, I feel like you found a software that was going to meet a lot of those concerns and worries. The transparency, the communication, the efficiency, hearing the staff fully supports it, it means a lot to me. Hearing the plans for a CIP planning in the future, the capital improvement planning, that's huge because we want to bring that on. And so having a software, an application in place to bring that on, I think that will help. I feel like the public process, the input, besides our budget committee, I don't feel like we get a lot of people here. So I'm hopeful that maybe this improved application, if we utilize it correctly, maybe it will improve our public process. Because if we come up with something better than our, you know, 600-page budget, maybe, I don't know what the application can do, but maybe it can condense it, it can create pamphlets. I would like to hear how people who use biennial budgeting and use UNA, what they do in that off-year. I mean, they've got to be doing something, and I'm hopeful about that. So I am a yes for the software. I feel like it meets the needs of things we've been asking for. We've wanted more financial communication throughout the year. And I'm a soft yes on biennial budgeting because I'm just, that's assuming we have a good plan for how we're going to, in the off-year. So those are my thoughts. Let's moving on. I think I might have any, everyone else's thoughts. Oh, yes.
I just want to chime in just briefly on the worry regarding the off-year budget process. First is the question, how much of the budget is boilerplate? Doesn't change year over year except for a small incrementation of costs, labor?
The majority.
So in a budget year, we put a lot of work in to a majority of the budget that really doesn't change. So we already do supplemental budgets for changes all the time. Well, I shouldn't say all the time, but a couple of times a year at least.
Yes, in a normal year, a couple.
So if the budget committee got more involved with the supplemental budgets, and we put a point in time that we are going to put the majority of those into place, that gives the people all, not very many, an opportunity to voice opinions on the changes that we need to make in the budget. And that's really the biggest part of this. We've all, in the private business, do budgets every year. They get complicated, they get pain, they're a pain. And when we're done with them, they go on the shelf, and we start living by forecasts and by rebudgeting our next two, three months of expenses. I do believe that this is probably the best thing that cities can do is to follow the state with annual or biannual budgets, moving forward with budget changes, supplemental budgets, and giving everybody the opportunity to be involved with that. I don't have a problem with coming into a couple more meetings every year. I kind of like it. I am in favor of all of the above.
Did anyone else, yep?
Just a quick comment. I, I hear the concerns expressed about the public participation. One thing that we should do above all is to be better. And with the system that's been proposed for the budget, it isn't once a year, it's every day. That new data is downloaded, and we have up-to-date information. And so if somebody, I have yet to hear people come to our budget hearings and talk about last year. Most of the time, they come to talk about what are the plans for next year. That's the topic of our budget deliberations. So I think that the exposure of this data in raw form, or unraw, but organized form, really is an information source that the community has never had before. And to be able to have it, we'd be doing our job better. And if you aren't informed through that, then you're not trying.
Well said, Jerry.
So what I hear you gentlemen saying responsively, and Chair Yu as well, what I hear you saying responsively to the concerns on the public engagement process is really that this stands to improve participation by streamlining the process, making the budget more accessible on a regular basis. And so really, the public engagement issue is potentially an issue more of narration rather than a real issue. In other words, that it would be an easy story to tell, that this is limiting public engagement. But from your perspective, you see this as an opportunity to expand or improve public participation. And so the issue is more of which narrative wins. Thank you for, thank you all for making all those points. Yep. Committee Member Ernst?
Well, I was going to say similar. I really liked what Meredith said, because when I was reading this, I was seeing it as an opportunity, and I wasn't seeing the downsides that others pointed out. They're valid for sure. I, we have a lot of people now that don't think that the budget process is very user-friendly. And we don't get people that come to the meetings very often, and people that read through the budget book. And so I think this is a really good opportunity to have it be more accessible to people, and they could actually get more involved, and we could probably get better and more input from the public on it. So that was one of the things I really liked about, about it. And also the free time. And of course, it, it wouldn't be perfect. So there would, you'd have to do supplemental things as we went along in the second year especially. But I think that frees up a lot of time where you could be creative with how you engage. Because the way that we're, the process is not transparent now, or at least it's not satisfactory to most people in the community, it seems like. So I don't, it's not like we're really great at it right now. We have improvements we can make. I think this, there's a lot of upside with this proposal.
Any other final thoughts?
You know, I think the process is transparent. I think the biggest problem with lots of people participating in the budget is the budget notebook. That thing is so overwhelming. And there's only a few people out in the public that are willing to take a look at that. So anything that can make that simpler, I think, would be beneficial.
Any other final thoughts? Great. Yes. Did you have a thought? Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. Okay. Did we give you what you need, Finance Director?
So I think, sort of. It was helpful. It was useful. And I think there are a couple of key areas where we'll put our heads together and see how we can bring a little bit more information back. But we'll, we'll need to schedule this for some clear council direction within the next handful of weeks if we're going to make this work.
Is there any chance you could actually kind of show us a live demo? I mean, I think if people could see how you can drill down and do some other things with this, it would be.
I, we recorded the demonstration. So, so yes, I can let people have access to it.
According to what you folks did, well, anything.
Yeah.
And maybe just sending it out to us before the next.
Okay, it's, it's an hour, it's an hour and a half. So that's.
I have a comment on the demo question, which is that.
I could send you all three that we demoed.
Or maybe the links to the cities that use it, so we could see what they make available to people.
Well, unfortunately, they are not using all of the aspects of the software that we would. And so like their budget books, for example, I don't think either one of the Oregon ones use this to create their budget book, which is the biggest kind of output document to compare. So, so that's unfortunate, but.
We, we have a comment from Counselor Chenoweth. Counselor Chenoweth?
Is he?
I'm trying to unmute. Am I free now?
Yes.
Apologize. So can you all hear me?
Yep.
Couple of things that in the, in the going around on comments. The first is if, if the vast majority of the budget is boilerplate, that seemed contradictory to the concept that we're going to save a ton of hours by not doing it every year. That, that, that doesn't seem like a messaging that is consistent. Second, I think the idea that we're going to have more transparency by having less budgets cycles where we're in front of the public discussing the tone that we're given every year, strikes me as also a contradictory messaging. And then, third, I think I've been sold through this process of listening to the conversations a little more on the software side of this. I think that, that, you know, IT is my thing. I do think often users are far more optimistic about the gains they're going to get out of a piece of software than it ever translates into being. That's 20 some odd years of experience of installing software into businesses and watching the net effects. Efficiencies do happen, but rarely do they come anywhere near what was anticipated. That being said, what has kind of moved the needle a little bit for me is that I do think that there are some pieces of financial data, and hearing how difficult it is to assimilate that from the staff side. So when, when the council has been persistently complaining about lacking, lacking some specific pieces of data that this might help answer to, it does seem kind of contrary on my part to say, I want this data, but I'm not going to give you the tool that would allow you to give me the data. So, you know, I'm kind of being moved a little bit on the software side, but I am still absolutely not moved on the idea of going to a biannual budget. I do not see that as a wise idea, nor an idea that increases transparency. And I really appreciated Sal's comments about what happened with the state, because they are now, have gone back to doing some major budgeting in the off-years because they needed to have more flexibility and transparency. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Right.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to unmute as well. I would just say, you know, I was definitely much more persuaded by what some of my colleagues on the budget committee said with regard to the software. And, you know, I still have some skepticism on both sides of this, but I did feel better about that after listening to other folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Thanks, everyone. There is no further business to come before the committee. I adjourn the committee at 7:39 PM.